Planning Commission hearing to order. Our next item, which you see on the screen is a Community Wildfire Protection Plan scoping hearing. And I want to draw everyone's attention also to a public notice, not only in addition to the city website, but also in the Santa Barbara news press, which reflected the description of this item as we have it in our staff report today. Before I go to the primary speaker from the fire department, I wanted to mention that in the course of the presentation, we are going to learn of a timeline which goes well beyond today that Ms. Anderson and Mr. Pore and I have previously discussed. So for both the commissioners and members of the public who have a strong interest in this item, today is not the end day, but actually there are many more public engagement, community workshop and public hearing opportunities that they will convey to us. But I wanted to let you know that today is not a final day for public engagement. So with that, we're going to have a 20-minute presentation and we have the clock up. And who will be presenting from the fire department today within our 20 minutes?
Chair Schwartz, I'll begin, then on to Chief Nickel, and then Amber will introduce the rest of the team.
Very good. Welcome.
Take for that 20-minute timeline. As the title suggests, this is a scoping hearing for the Environmental Impact Report for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which hasn't been updated since 2004, as you know. The project consists in two parts. The first part is the creation of the CWPP itself, which we've been hard at work at for the past year, and we concluded the draft in June. The second part is where we are now, and that's examining the new CWPP through the lens of a program environmental impact report. And the project needs an EIR just like the last one because of the type of work that we tend to accomplish on the ground. Tammy, if we could have the second slide. In Roman numeral two of the staff report, you'll notice that we cover a few of the statutory CEQA guidelines for what's required for us, where we do know that we have to prepare an EIR. A couple of them, there's a notice of preparation or NLP that's sent to the Office of Planning and Development in Sacramento and to all stakeholders. And then there's the initial study, which outlines the areas that our analysis reveals could have significant environmental impacts and need to be studied as part of the EIR. This hearing is to discuss and receive comment on the scope of analysis. So we'll have a brief discussion of that in the course of this. And then as you refer to the timeline, we'll put the timeline up on the screen so you can see where we are. Also, all of this will be posted. This meeting will be posted on our website, the recorded version, and it'll be posted on all of our social media. So we ask everyone who's watching to get the word out and share the links with whoever else might be watching so that we can continue to get the kind of input that we got when we created the CWPP itself. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Nickel. And then in the interest of time, we'll transition directly from Chief Nickel to Amber Anderson for the remainder.
Well, thank you, Fire Marshal Pore. Chair Schwartz, members of the commission, Fire Chief Eric Nickel. I guess I'm going to kick off my comments, number one, by thanking the entire planning commission. It was your leadership about 16 months ago in our budget hearing for last fiscal year's budget, where this item was really budgeted for this current fiscal year, 2021. And the planning commission came out very strongly as an advocate to move this forward a year and actually drove that to be included in last year's budget. Now, we were fortunate to receive a CAL FIRE grant to assist in some of the, you know, paying for this. But it's really your leadership at the planning commission that has brought us here a year ahead, and this is so important. As you know, probably the biggest year-to-year threat that this community faces is a catastrophic wildfire. Much like we saw with the cave fire the week of Thanksgiving, fire starts on the national forest up at the top of the mountains and is driven, wind-driven down into the wildland urban interface. The CWPP will allow us to reemphasize with a new updated plan protecting the community from fire. It is accurate, based on modeling and the most current data and science, the understanding of the fire risks that we face here in this community. I really have to hand it to the team that you're going to see present today that has really put their running shoes on. We are under some time constraints from the CAL FIRE grant. We have to have this done a year faster than what would typically be done. And the team has done amazing work. And I also want to thank the community for their involvement. We had approximately 75 people at the first public hearing before things shut down with COVID. We quickly pivoted to an online community public hearing where we had 45 or 50 community members. We received all kinds of great feedback. We continue to receive great emails from the community, questions, concerns, comments. And, you know, it really, you know, reinforces how important this is to the community. We thank the feedback. We thank the community for their feedback. And we continue. We're looking forward to additional feedback. So with that, I would like to hand it off to the rest of our team here to take it from here, but out of gratitude and protecting the community. Thank you, Commission. Amber?
Thank you, Chief Nickel. Thank you for going to the next slide, too. So as the chief alliterated, too, this is a very large effort that's taken the involvement from multiple city departments, subject matter experts and stakeholders throughout the community. In addition to Chief Nickel, Fire Marshal Pore and myself, I'd like to quickly introduce the rest of the team who appear to provide information, answer some questions and hear the feedback. From the planning department within the city, we have Rosie Geissi. She's here to ensure the consistency with our plan amongst other city plans and land use requirements. We have Scott Eckhart from DUDEX, who brings to us 19 years of natural resource and forest management experience. He'll be talking to us about the CWPP hazard assessment modeling and mapping. And we have Jessica Kinnahan, who's the project manager for the Environmental Impact Report from DUDEX. She's going to be providing the nuts and bolts of the scoping hearing as well as providing with us an overview of the programmatic environmental impact report and defines for us the environmental issues for analysis as we move forward. Tammy, if you can go to the next slide. So as you know, a CWPP is a large effort that involves public input, participation and buy-in. And the number one thing that we are going to accomplish is to keep our public informed. And to do that, we developed a website that hosts our draft documents, our news releases and our maps, as well as offers an opportunity for the public to subscribe to emails to receive the latest information as it comes available. The website address is at the bottom of that slide at cwpp.santabarbara.ca.gov. Next slide, Tammy. As mentioned, this project is being run under the direction of CAL FIRE, and this is our very compressed timeframe to accomplish the project within about 18 months. You can see that we're about in the middle of this project. We have done a lot of work leading up to this point to develop our CWPP, and this is the first of four hearings that we have before us before we present our environmental impact report and CWPP for City Council recommendations in March of 2021 before we turn it over to CAL FIRE for their final approval. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
Good afternoon, Fire Commissioners. I'm Jessica Kinnahan. I'm a senior project manager with DUDEX. Thank you for letting us be here today. Picking up on what a scoping hearing is, it is under the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as CEQA, which was a law that was passed in 1970 under Governor Reagan. And the primary purpose of CEQA really is to disclose impacts and to inform the public about the extent of a project. And so really, its goal is an open, transparent, public process where you're also able to discuss alternatives and look at the holistic aspects of the project. So what we will be looking at today as part of our scoping hearing is providing an overview of the CWPP. We'll touch on the notice of preparation and the initial study checklist, which I'll talk about a little bit more later in our presentation. And most importantly, we're here to request input on the scope of the Program Environmental Impact Report, or PEIR. We'll look at discussing alternatives, mitigation, and also keep you in the loop about future opportunities as to how you can stay involved. Next slide, please. So what is a program EIR? This is a specific type of document under the CEQA guidelines where the lead agency or the agency that has primary responsibility for carrying out a project makes a determination about the type of environmental analysis that's appropriate. And what is different with a program EIR is that it's generally focused in a larger geographical area with many actions that would take place under one regulatory framework. It's not intended to be a project-specific level of detail, so you won't get into the minutia that you might see on other projects, but it is intended to be a broader look at an overall project. Next slide, please. So unfortunately, it looks like our formatting got a little wonky here, but on that PEIR process overview, so we're at the place where we are at the NOP comment period in the scoping hearing, which that period will move from July 3rd through August 3rd. Once that period concludes, the draft Program Environmental Impact Report will be prepared and released for public comment. So that is another checkpoint in the process where the public will have an opportunity to comment on the project. Once those comments are set forth, those comments will be incorporated into the final program EIR, which will be released for review and ultimately certification along with the CWPP at City Council. With that, I will turn it over to my colleague Scott Eckhart to take you through the CWPP itself.
Thank you, Jessica. Good afternoon. Just a brief overview of the CWPP itself. Community Wildfire Protection Plan is a comprehensive plan intended to mitigate the impact of wildland fire to the city. It is an update to the city's 2004 wildland fire plan, which was formally recognized as the city's CWPP in 2011. The document evaluates fire hazard in the city and develops recommendations and recommended actions to reduce the threat of wildland fire to the community. Recommendations in the plan are related to fire codes and standards, funding, fire rehabilitation, evacuation, fire protection, vegetation and fuels management, and public education. Next slide, please. So part of the CWPP development process was to analyze fire hazard in the city. And this was an update to the hazard assessment conducted for the 2004 plan. And the hazard assessment informed some of the recommendations that are included in the plan. And there are two main recommendations that were informed by the hazard assessment. And those are recommended changes to the city's high fire hazard areas and additions to the city's vegetation management units. And we'll talk a little bit about those in subsequent slides. Next slide, please. So the hazard assessment itself included a lot of different variables, field assessments to look at vegetation, terrain, development patterns, other features in the city that contribute to fire hazard, analysis of spatial and mapping data relevant to fire hazard, modeling of fire behavior, potential fire behavior under extreme fire weather conditions, and a review of existing plans, codes and standards related to fire protection in the city. The fire behavior modeling itself incorporated a lot of different components and characteristics, including terrain, vegetation or fuels, and incorporated local weather data, local wind and weather data. And we specifically looked at potential fire behavior occurring during an extreme sundown or wind event in the city. We looked at the outputs of flame length and crown fire potential. I'll mention a little bit more about those in a moment. And the modeling itself was conducted in a GIS or mapping platform, and that allowed us to identify geographic or specific areas in the city that had the potential for extreme fire behavior and areas where fire hazard would be high. Next slide, please. So this map is the result of the fire behavior modeling effort depicting a flame length output. Flame length is just one component of fire behavior, but an important one to consider. In general, higher or greater flame lengths create more extreme fire behavior and consequently a greater resistance to fire suppression and control efforts by firefighters. And the modeling itself, we look at, you know, general trends in the city. And as you can see on the map, you know, we observed more extreme fire behavior in the foothill and coastal areas of the city where terrain and fuels drive fire behavior. Next slide, please. Another variable we looked at in our hazard assessment was fire history. The city of Santa Barbara is no stranger to wildfire, as the chief mentioned here at the outset of the presentation. There have been a number of large indoor damaging fires in or near the city since the 2004 plan. In 2008, the T Fire, the 2009, as a seat of fire, the Thomas Fire 2017 and the cave fire last year. And typically, these fires are pushing southward under sundown or wind events toward the city. I would note, too, that this map represents a catalogued fire perimeters at the state level and omit fires that are small, 30 acres and less. So it doesn't pick up some smaller fires that are extinguished quickly. Next slide, please. So after modeling, we compared the fire behavior outputs with the city's existing high fire hazard areas and evaluated where there could potentially be changes in that area designation. We also considered other fire hazard mapping data, specifically the state-level CAL FIRE fire hazard severity mapping as well as Santa Barbara County mapping data. And those are shown on the map here in front of you. In the interest of time, I won't go into too much detail, but the current fire hazard areas are designated as the extreme foothill, foothill, coastal interior and coastal areas. The orange polygons you see are proposed additions in the foothill region, and the green and yellow are proposed additions in the coastal area of the city. And this map and these proposed additions were presented at our April 1st community workshop. Next slide, please. And so the CWPP provides recommended actions, as I mentioned, specific to the high fire hazard areas. It recommends adding and removing some areas. It also recommends consolidating and renaming some of these areas, specifically consolidating the coastal and coastal interior areas into the high fire hazard severity zone and consolidating the foothill, extreme foothill zones, or rather, areas into the very high fire hazard severity zone. The reason for this recommended name change is so there's consistency with the state-level CAL FIRE fire hazard severity zone mapping, the update of which is currently underway and unfortunately is unlikely to be completed by the time the CWPP process is through. Next slide, please. This map shows vegetation management units in the city. Vegetation management units or BMUs are areas of land where the city can and has historically treated vegetation to reduce potential fire intensity. These areas enhance the fire protection capabilities in the city. So we looked at our fire behavior modeling and other hazard assessment data and compared those with the existing vegetation management units. We identified potential additions to these areas that considered the location of existing units and focused on closing gaps between those existing units, connecting the units themselves to logical boundaries such as roads, and adding units where extreme fire behavior was modeled or where fire history identified a need. And so again, these proposed modifications were presented at the April 1st community workshop. Next slide, please. And so the CWPP provides recommended actions associated with vegetation management units. It recommends adding the units you see here on the map in green. It recommends a prioritization of these units in terms of in what order they're treated, and the prioritization is based on the density of structures in or near those zones or those units, the travel time from city and county fire stations to those areas, as well as the treatment history of those zones. And the document recommends clarifying and updating some of the vegetation management techniques, standards and best management practices. So with that, we'll turn it back to Jessica. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So looking at the initial study, this is based on a standard CEQA checklist that defines certain resource areas for consideration when you're looking at environmental impacts of a project. Next slide, please. So as you can see, there are many resource areas that have been considered. Certain resource areas have actually been added in the most recent CEQA updates at the end of 2018. But in doing our analysis as part of the initial study, we have been able to look at areas where we feel definitively we can screen out from further consideration in the program EIR and certain resource areas where we can see that there's a potential for a significant impact and it needs to be evaluated further in the EIR. Next slide. So in this particular area, we've been able to look at agricultural and forestry resources, energy, mineral resources and population and housing and determine that there would not be potential for a significant impact and therefore did not need to be considered further in the EIR. However, next slide, please. The remaining resource areas are areas where we do feel there is a potential for an environmental impact that would need to be analyzed in greater detail in the EIR. Next slide, please. So just as part of our EIR scoping hearing outreach, I just wanted to touch on the fact that the materials are posted to the CWPP website so you're able to see the NOP and the initial study. We've reached out via email and there's also, as the chair had mentioned, newspaper ads regarding this particular hearing today. We've mailed the notice of preparations to multiple agencies and stakeholders who've requested it. And this is also posted on the State Office of Planning and Research, OPR, State CEQA net website. So there's multiple facets where you can get this information. Next slide.
Ms. Kinnahan, are we wrapping up and turning it back over to the fire department representatives?
Correct. Yes, I have this slide and then it goes back to our fire department. Thank you. So most important today for the scoping hearing, we are really focused on your input on what you perceive should be included in the Program Environmental Impact Report. You can see the areas where you can provide the comment. Please provide your comments by 4:00 PM on August 3rd. And with that, I'll turn it over to Amber.
Actually, turning back to me. And I'm posting the slide of the timeline up here just for reference, since as people can see it, we are completed. And I thank the team for bringing that in in 20 minutes. So with that being said, if the commission has any questions for us, we're prepared to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Pore. At this time, we're going to go to public comment. So I don't know also if we can have a split screen of both the public comment process, which you now see before you, along with the timeline. But if not, we can come back to that timeline because I think it may be helpful. Ms. Kokinda, any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, again, if you're interested in speaking on this item, please raise your hand using the hand icon on your GoToWebinar control panel, and I will call on you. I see Mr. Bob Hart. I have just unmuted you, Mr. Hart. If you could please unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon, and you will have two minutes to speak.
And Ms. Kokinda, if I could ask Mr. Pore, could you turn off your webcam and audio during the public comment? Thank you. We'll bring you back on shortly.
And one more time, Mr. Bob Hart. There we go. It looks like your audio is on. You have two minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak today on the scoping of this plan. I'm Bob Hart. I'm the CEO of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, speaking on behalf of them and as a homeowner in the Bel Air Knolls area. One thing that we've noticed is that the Bel Air Knolls area, Vista del Campo condominiums below are being included in a high fire zone where they have never been before. History doesn't show that these areas should be included in the high fire zone. It shouldn't be scoped as part of this. Even the modeling doesn't put it at a level that I would think would make it high fire. But the benefits to the community are not going to outweigh the disadvantages to homeowners, that we have a situation where a disclosure that the home is in a high fire zone will decrease its value. So we're very concerned about that. They're saying that housing is automatically stricken from this, and I think when you're scoping, it needs to be included because if additional areas are added as high fire, it gives the city the ability to say no ADUs would be allowed, and that would adversely affect the ability to add additional housing in our community. So housing is something that should be considered in the Environmental Impact Report. We are very much in favor of fire safety. I want to make sure that we understand that. But we also want to make sure that we understand what areas need to be protected. As the chief started, he was saying that, you know, fire starts in the forest area and then burns down to the city, and that's traditionally what has happened. So we haven't had a situation where we have something in the Bel Air Knolls area for the 27 years we've lived here. We've never been evacuated. We don't see that we should be labeled the same as those areas that are up against the national forest, and it would have a negative impact on our ability to get insurance, our ability to build ADUs and the values of our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any other speakers, Ms. Kokinda?
I don't see any other hands raised, Chair Schwartz, but I would just ask members of the public one last time, if you wish to speak on this item, to please raise your hand using the hand icon, and I will call on you. And I don't see any other hands raised at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kokinda. So now we're going to bring it back to the commission.
Chair Schwartz, I'm so sorry to... Yes, thank you. I'm so sorry to interrupt. This is Heidi Rydell. I just wanted to have you acknowledge the written correspondence the commission received.
Thank you, Ms. Rydell. Are there any details pertaining to that that you'd like to comment on or how members of the public can access the public comment letters?
We are still working on our process to make written public comment available to the public, but we did receive correspondence from members of the public, and they were distributed to the commission prior to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rydell. We'll continue to follow up with you on that. So now, back to the commission again for questions of any members of the applicant team. Could we have a slide up, please, of the full applicant team so that the commissioners can direct their questions to appropriate representatives? And the reason I say this is, in the interest of time, we don't want to have one question answered by every single one of the members of the team. So we want to be selective and strategic in terms of to whom we're directing a question. Or Mr. Pore or Ms. Anderson could certainly guide us in terms of which team member is most appropriate, but we just want to avoid redundancy. So now to Commissioner Wiskom for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very excited to have this before us. And I wrote out my questions, so forgive me if I'm reading them, but, and I don't know who they go to, so perhaps Fire Marshal Pore could direct them to the appropriate person. But they're all related to the scoping that we saw, the explanations we saw in the staff report of the scoping for the programmatic EIR. My first question is on page seven, and forgive me, I'm going to jump around, page seven of 202, section I, hydrology and water quality, drainage, stormwater runoff, water quality and creeks states that further analysis is needed to assess the CWPP's potential to impact stormwater runoff and potentially significant impacts may result. And then if you go on to staff report, page 11 of 202, section Q, wildfire, it says slopes and runoff states that removal of vegetation and controlled burns could result in an increase of surface flows. But due to the limited nature of these activities, CWPP impacts would be less than significant. So this seems to be a contradiction to me in those two sections, and I just wonder if one of you could address that, perhaps a member of the DUDEX team.
Chair, Commissioner Wiskom, this is Jessica from DUDEX. Thank you for pointing that out. So I think the consideration with runoff, I agree that the way that it is presented could have been better laid out. I think that the primary focus in wildfires is really looking at controlled burns and the consequences of controlled burns, where you may be reducing vegetation to a certain level of the soil, whereas when you're dealing with any kind of vegetation removal, you may actually be disturbing the root structure and therefore potentially causing additional soil runoff as a consequence of that. But your point's a good one, and I think we can address that through the discussion in the EIR.
Okay. Thank you for the answer to that. Okay, so my second question is staff report, page eight of 202J, land use planning conflict with plans for avoiding environmental effect is a potentially significant impact. And since... And since, since channel work and ring nets were installed in Montecito post mudslides following the Thomas Fire, is this, is this section where the analysis of impacts for similar installation would occur, should it be necessary in the city of Santa Barbara?
Joe, do you want me to take that question as well?
Yes. Jessica.
Okay, certainly. Thank you, Chair, Commissioner Whiskom. So I think the C W P P at this level, I may also have my colleague Scott Eckert chime in as far as the scope and extent of the C W P P goes. The measures that we are looking at as part of the C W P P, if they do propose items that would affect a channel or a creek or otherwise, we would look at that in relationship to the existing land use policies in effect, as well as other policies such as biological resource protection. I'm just thinking of, those are the ones that are jumping to mind immediately, but yes, we would look at that as part of the P E I R.
Okay, that's great. That's a really good answer. Thank you for that. And then on staff report, page four of two oh two, E, cultural resources, and then staff report, Timmy's going to, I'm going to drive Timmy nuts, page 10 of two oh two, P, tribal and cultural resources, they seem repetitive. Is there, how do they differ? So how do section E, cultural resources, how does that differ from P, tribal and cultural resources?
I assume I will take this one as well, Joe, with thoughts. Okay.
Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Chair Commissioner Whiskom, so the cultural resources and tribal culture resources were identified as two separate resource areas in Sequa, if I recall correctly, about four years ago, five years ago. And so the intent through identifying tribal culture resources is that it allows opportunities of Native American tribes to have a greater input in the process and to look at resources that may be specific to Native American tribes that may not otherwise have been considered as in cultural resources. So they are, they are obviously related, but they are in their own two independent areas and D U D A C is a part of our support of the city in this, is looking at outreach to tribal cultural resource entities, as well as doing a cultural record search that will cover all of those various items. Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Okay. And then my next question is staff report, page nine of two oh two, section M, public services and utilities, fire, police, schools, parks and public facilities, states that the C W P P would be a continuation of ongoing efforts utilizing firefighting resources, including management of prescriptive burn areas and vegetation management activities. I shortened that up a little bit, taken out some of it. The C W P P is not anticipated to increase demand for any of these services, therefore impacts would be less than significant and wouldn't be analyzed any further. But if you then go to table eight of the draft, page 92 of two oh two, vegetation management unit and community fuels treatment network modifications. On, on page 92, this is just an example, you see area I D. 28 through 46, which is there, yeah. So they're all proposed, they're all high and they're all in addition. And this area encompasses over 390 acres. So is, is this not an increased demand for vegetation management services and an increased demand for departmental services, which is kind of contrary to them saying there's no.
I couldn't quite hear you.
I'm sorry.
Could you please repeat what you said?
Sorry, Siri's talking to me. She wants to answer. Do you want Siri to answer the question?
Please do.
If I could address part of that answer, the, the change in the, in high fire hazard area may impact the fire department and our ability to, to do the vegetation management projects, you know, that encompass the C W P P as a whole, but it won't change the, the city services that we currently provide to those areas, you know, and will continue to do so. In other words, the hydrants will be the same, you know, our accessways will be the same as we have them now. The only thing different would be that, that, you know, we might be doing more vegetation management in those areas. So, so the city infrastructure that exists will remain and it won't change.
So do you, do you then believe that, that, that where, where the report says that, or the staff report says that, and I realize it's a staff report, says that the C W P P is not anticipated to increase demand for any of these services, therefore impacts would be less than significant? Are you saying Fire Marshal Poirot that, that, that there's just not going to be that, the vegetation management is going to be insignificant in those new areas?
If, if anything, what we believe is that vegetation management projects that we do will actually decrease the need for fire department services because we, you know, it'll decrease the fire hazard or it'll decrease the intensity of a fire once it starts. And so we won't need to commit as many resources to extinguish the fire. So that's basically the trade-off where we feel.
So you're, you're saying it's, it's a net decrease is what you're saying. It's a net decrease. Okay. That's great. Okay. Very good. And then I'm going on, I just have a couple more questions. In section 5.2.5, which is page 105 of two oh two of the C W P P draft, it discusses economics. And looking back to the E I R scoping, aren't there potentially significant economic impacts for properties and areas proposed to be added to the high fire hazard areas? There's potential insurance costs, there's redevelopment codes such as the structural hardening, which is discussed for existing property owners in these areas. And there's also increased costs for vegetation management by the department. So I'm, I'm asking, shouldn't the E I R scoping include, I realize it's not on that Sequa shortlist for a programmatic, I hadn't seen that list before, a programmatic E I R, but shouldn't it include a discussion of economic impacts?
I'm not sure about the Sequa aspects of it. Maybe Jessica can answer that question, but as far as what the difference between the programmatic and another type of E I R. But, you know, I can certainly see your point and appreciate the question.
Commissioners and Commissioner Whiskom specifically. So Sequa is, I suppose, somewhat unique in the sense that it really is targeting impact, physical environmental impacts and doesn't really take into consideration the economics behind the physical impacts. So I think in the context of your consideration of the C W P P as a whole, that may need to be part of your discussion and conversation, but from a standpoint of the environmental effects, it's really focused on the Sequa Appendix G checklist and providing responses to those particular items in that checklist. And there, there really isn't a forum or topical area where you can really focus in on economic and economic considerations.
Okay. Well, in, in follow-up to that, I noticed when you crossed off the, the less than significant impacts on that list, there was a, there was a category for population and housing. And there, that wasn't even included in our report. Yeah, it's right there in the first column. And, you know, perhaps that's a place for it or why was that crossed off and then not, you know, the rest of these cross-offs were, were discussed, but that didn't seem to get discussed.
Yeah. And it's, it's an excellent question, Ray. Generally, so again, coming back to the Sequa Appendix G checklist for population and housing, the two questions that are asked in the standard template format are really, as a result of your project, are you going to drive an increase in housing? Or are you going to cause an impact as a consequence of increased housing? Those are really the primary purposes of that, or are you going to induce significant population to your area as a consequence of your project? So the economics, and I, again, hear what you're saying about the consideration of economics, but in the context of that Sequa Appendix G checklist, the, the consideration as part of population and housing doesn't really allow for that topic to be broached in that particular way.
So is there, when you look at this checklist, is there a place for a category, since you have an economic analysis in the draft C W P P, is there a place within your programmatic E I R for economic analysis that may result in significant impacts?
As our, our document is framed right now, we do not have an additional conversation about economic impact. And I see Allison's jumping on, if Allison wants to chime in, I'll pause there.
Yes, thank you. Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Whiskom, I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Kinnahan had said earlier, that Sequa is focused on the physical impacts of a project, which is why economics doesn't typically play into that. Where it may come into play is during the alternatives analysis. Sometimes if there are class one significant impacts, there may be a statement of overriding considerations that is required. And that's the point at which economic factors may come into play.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I have one final question that's really not, well, not really related to the scoping, but in the goals of the action plan, which is page 107 of two oh two of the draft, states that the goal is to protect lives, property and natural resources and reduce hazards through fire protection, few hazard reduction, public education, preparedness and community involvement. I think you can check all of those. You, you're really working hard on all of those. But with respect to the areas proposed to be eliminated from the C W P P because they're no longer in the city and they were included in the 2004 plan, but are now going to get eliminated. And because fire doesn't know any boundaries, isn't there a risk to public safety by removing them without notice? Or are you specifically noticing people that they are being removed from that and that they are under the county jurisdiction?
Commissioner Whiskom, I think that Scott may be able to speak to this better than I can, but the areas that are outside of the city that were inadvertently included in 2004 or other areas that are adjacent to us, like our partners in Montecito and Santa Barbara County, Mission Canyon is a good example. Just because it isn't within our C W P P doesn't mean that it's not within theirs. So it's, all of these areas are still going to be in a very high fire severity zone. Mr. Scott, if you have anything to add to that?
That's correct, Joe. Thank you and thank you Vice Chair Whiskom. The areas that are proposed to be removed from the city's high fire hazard areas are outside, are now outside of city jurisdiction, but they are within the county's high fire hazard zone currently. So effectively, there is not a change, with the exception of that they're, they're not addressed in the city document now.
So the, these property owners already know to call county fire rather than city fire, even though they were included in the 2004 plan? I mean, generally, is that typically?
Yeah.
If you got a call from.
I would hate to speculate. I would presumably if they, if they dial 911, then the.
They get directed to the.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and all of you. I appreciate the report and those are the extent of my questions.
Thank you. As we continue on with commissioner questions, I don't know if I saw Commissioner Lodge next, but I did want to just remind our commission of two things, that today we did receive public input, that was part one of our obligations. The second is to provide direction to staff on the scope of the programmatic environmental impact report. So as we ask questions, just know, we need to come back around to provide direction on scope. So if you could please keep that in mind. Now let's go. Commissioner Lodge, were you next for questions?
I don't know, but I'll go next.
Thank you. Please do.
I want to thank Commissioner Whiskom to start with for asking some of the questions I had, so I don't need to ask those. This is kind of a procedural question. Public comment, for example, we got a letter from the Santa Barbara Audubon Society with a lot of concerns about how the impact on wildlife, on birds in particular, would be affected by the work that would be done as part of the program. My understanding, am I correct, that all comments will be responded to and might the issues that the Audubon Society brought up be, become part of the entire E I R, rather than simply a question or comments that were responded to at the end? And Ms. Kinnahan, I think you're the one that needs to answer that one.
Certainly. Commissioner Lodge specifically. So we are, through the scoping process, as the comments are being submitted, they're being consolidated and they will be addressed through the E I R process. To your point about potential impacts, the, in the event that the measures the fire department needs to put into place to manage vegetation for public safety, if those measures, for example, since we're talking about Audubon and potentially bird impacts, so if there is a measure the fire department needs to put into place that would conflict with birds and that is found to be a significant impact, the purpose of Sequa is to disclose the impact so that the decision maker and public can be aware of that and mitigate that impact to the extent possible. So you reduce that impact, disclose that, but ultimately it is upon the city council to make the determination and it's something called a statement of overriding considerations. So effectively, in non-Sequo terms, the city council is saying, we acknowledge this as an impact and we're making the decision to move forward with this project anyway. So just because you have a significant unavoidable impact doesn't mean that a project can't be approved. It just means that it has to be done so with full disclosure and mitigated to the extent feasible. So from the standpoint of, it could be bird impacts potentially found to be significant that the city council and their discretion will decide the fire protection measures provided outweigh the impacts to the birds.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Commissioner Higgins, questions?
Yeah, two questions. One is on this, just for reference in the executive summary, third paragraph, there's a sentence that says, this program also recommends consolidating and renaming a high fire hazard area for consistency with state level high fire hazard severity zone mapping. So I think what that means is we're going to change the, the lingo up when we're mapping, just call it something else. Is that correct?
One moment. Could we ask Mr. Bolton to put up on the screen, the specific page that Commissioner Higgins is referencing? Thank you. This is very.
Third paragraph. You did have it right, Commissioner Higgins. The, it's, it's a nomenclature thing and it goes back through history. When the Healthy Forest Restoration Act was first enacted in 2003, we were one of the first fire departments in the nation to create what we now call a C W P P. Back then, we called the Wildland Fire Plan. We got ours completed in 2004 and we created these zones, the foothill and the extreme foothill and the coastal and the coastal interior. And then as, as the state and others caught up with us, the state had nomenclature that was very high fire hazard severity zone and very high fire zones. And so what we've decided to do is to make our nomenclature match theirs essentially. The effect is the same.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's my question. Is the effect the same? So it's a very good start in the beefy document. So that's my compliment around the fact that I didn't get to read it all word for word. So my question is, is there somewhere in this document or elsewhere where, where these, the new nomenclature is detailed? And I guess what I'm getting at is, it seems like we're going to assign some categories, some geographic territories to a category. And I want to make sure that category is well defined or there's not a different set of parameters or limitations in a new category. And so we're not just getting a map without the definition. It would be like giving something a zone district name without a definition of what's allowable. That's my concern. Could you help me out there?
Yes, it will, Commissioner Higgins. The, the, for instance, because we're combining the extreme foothill and the foothill zones into the CAL FIRE. because we're combining the extreme foothill and the foothill zones into the CAL FIRE, very high fire hazard severity zone, we are actually probably going to um make the same conditions for, say, defensible space um and vegetation management apply to both of those, what we now call two different zones across the board as, as one zone. And that's, and that will be, uh, that's detailed as part of the C W P P. And uh, so when, when we pull it all together, um, it's, the requirements are going to be the same for both. It'll, it'll just be.
So, so in the scoping, and maybe if this gets to, you know, deliberations or, or comments, I just want to make sure we're, we get really good definition about what the map, mapping categories entail and, and, and the connections to um either maintenance or limitations, or if it's, it's outside of the city's um parameters uh with respect to insurance premiums or just what are these category names really mean? So it's full disclosure in, in our E I R. Um, and then my other question is about um utility undergrounding. We've obviously heard a lot about the fact that fires can be started by overhead utility lines. Is, is there um, they're just not an appropriate um funding source for that kind of um discussion within the C W P P program? Or, or why is, is that not appropriate here? I find myself wanting to read about that um right now and it's not really in there.
Commissioner Higgins, that's, that's because the C W P P applies to what the fire department has the capacity and, and the plan to do. Um, so we plan to do vegetation management. We plan to have um defensible space requirements and, and we plan to do things as a department and as a city um that will uh help mitigate the fire danger. The uh electrical power lines are typically owned by the power company and are a sep, it would be a separate project um that would be undertaken by the utility. Uh, and if they, if they were undergrounded like uh high power lines, for instance, the, the lines that come down Sycamore Canyon, that would be uh a significant project that would probably require its own E I R um just to accomplish that. But it's not a city project. That's why it's not included. It's not something we have the power to do.
So I, okay, I, I get that. Um. It's too bad. I'll, I'll save a comment on that for later. My, I do have one more question, um, Madam Chair, for um either staff or Ms. Kinahan about CEQA here. And um I understand your, the limitations of the analysis in terms of the um effect of the project on the environment. But I, 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 um, you know, the reverse is where we're not supposed to go, the effect of the environment on the project. But it, it, it does seem like there's quite a bit of extraneous, I'll call it extraneous, um effects of this project on um housing, um transportation. You know, if, if, for example, if you, if we wanted to just blanket the entire city with high fire, we'd have much less traffic. And I think that's the heart of the matter as it relates to A D U's. The um service rate goes up, the traffic, because the traffic goes down. But there's not a lot of um discussion about traffic benefits um as a result of the, the, the mapping designations. And so, you know, you, much like economic impacts or economic benefits, you're not going to get into that in a CEQA analysis. But um it sure seems like there's, there's potentially a lot lacking for the, for the bigger picture um of, of your analysis and an opportunity to really talk about that stuff, too. Do you have any place outside of the, the, the E I R scope to talk about that? As an addendum or something like that?
So Commissioner Higgins, so if I'm understanding you correctly, um, you're looking at not just transportation also, or, and something maybe to the effect of economics to get incorporated potentially as a technical analysis as maybe in an appendix in the E I R? Is, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, just a, a slightly broader scope.
Uh, we can certainly take that into consideration and um discuss that with the fire department staff and see if we can incorporate that analysis into the E I R.
It, it just, it, it occurs to me um that, you know, the cooperation of other agencies or, or the utility districts is, is um, is, you know, is missing in this. And I know it's not within your purview and probably requires a lot more coordination and we don't really have time for that. But it's just a question that I have. So um food for thought for now at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Reed, questions?
Uh, yes, thanks, Chair Schwartz. Um. First off, this is an incredibly impressive amount of information and an impressive process, so happy to be a part of it. Um, I, I want, I only have a couple of questions, uh, and they're related, I believe. Going back to Commissioner Wiskom's question on population and housing, um, I also noticed that in the staff report, under the scope of analysis, the, the areas that were stricken, including population and housing, weren't addressed. But I'm referencing uh page fifty one on Exhibit B, which is the initial study. If we could pull that up. Uh, so sorry, this is a exhibit, Exhibit B, I believe, the initial study.
Do we have a page number for that, Commissioner Reed, by chance?
Yeah, it's page fifty one of the initial study and that was a.
Not in our.
Well, it was, it was an H T M L attachment. Um, so maybe we can't pull that up. I can just reference it. I'll just go ahead and reference it. So I, it's under the uh, the section for thirteen, population and housing. And uh, it, it, uh, it states under impact evaluation guidelines. Um, uh, there's two bullet points and one of those two bullet points states uh a loss, and these are potentially significant impacts to population and housing. Um, and they could involve one of these two bullet points, the second of which states a loss of substantial number of people or housing units, especially loss of lower cost housing. Um, and so I just, uh, my question is, can this be introduced into the scope of analysis? Or am I reading this wrong? Does this fall, fall out of it?
Oh, um Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Reed, I'll start and then if Ms. Kinahan wants to add anything. So the CEQA analysis is based on existing conditions. So when the initial study is being filled out, it's not based on the potential number of accessory dwelling units that could be built in an area. It's based on what exists on the ground. And so the project won't affect existing housing units that are on the ground.
Okay. And, and what, uh, Fire Marshal may have answered this. Uh, and maybe this is something that gets addressed at city council. But Mr. Busk, when would, when would there be an appropriate opportunity um to, to analyze that effect and that impact? Or wouldn't there be?
Commissioner Reed, I think that's something that would be appropriate to analyze as part of the C W P P itself. And then um also there will be additional discussion, I'm sure, as the planning commission is considering proposed amendments to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which is actually scheduled for review on August sixth. But I think a discussion could be part of the document, the C W P P document, just not necessarily the environmental review of that document.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Busk. And then lastly, uh, referencing back to the staff report um and the scope of analysis. Um, Commissioner Wiskom also uh read a section from um the slopes and runoff over, under cue of wildfire, which stated uh that it would have a less than significant impact. Um, and I'm, I'm just comparing that, for example, against uh Section C under air quality, which states that it would have a potentially significant impact. And my question um is, at this point and in this scope of analysis that, that we're being presented, it's, I, I, I'm, I'm, there's a disconnect for me in how uh this report is coming to those determinations. Uh, I, I think there might be a bias in our community towards um runoff and uh considering the effects of the debris flow on our community and, and wondering, can we potentially include that just to satisfy um that sensitivity? Versus under air quality, as, as I read it, and it's stated as a potentially significant impact, um, the staff report states that the project's potential emissions would, for the most part, uh, and this is on page three of the staff report, um, come from the mechanized equipment such as chainsaws, weed chips, or weed whips, wood chippers and vehicles. Vehicles used are typically small utility trucks and pickups used to haul shipping machines on surface streets that remove cut brush from vegetation management and road clearing projects. When I, when I read that as a potentially significant impact, um, I, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand, I, I don't see how that uh, that process under the C W P P could be any less impacting. And so why, why are we proposing further review on air quality and not on others? Um, is my very wordy question.
I think, and I'll bring Jessica back in here to discuss this a little bit, too. But I think that we do talk about erosion and those types of effects in the geological section. Jessica?
Correct. Commissioners, um, Fire Marshal Cora, you are correct, yes. And um I am looking through the document. Um, I, I agree that the um assessment of impacts in wildfire um should be carried forward as potentially significant. And um I think that in comparison to air quality, just looking at issues with air quality versus wildfire, um, you will be looking at uh potential greenhouse gas emissions and particulate matter emissions. And all of that does relate to one another. So um I hear what you're saying and I appreciate your input on this as far as the P E I R goes. And I think what that means is we just need to take a closer look at wildfire in the P E I R. Uh, in addition, I'm also hearing with population and housing, um, from what I am hearing from the commission, that the direction would be that the population and housing analysis needs to be carried forward into the E I R, although the initial study had dismissed it. So hearing that as well and I can take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kinahan. And then last uh brief clarifying question. On the staff report, uh, letter J, land use planning, um, the last uh part of that section states a conflict with plans for avoiding environmental impact or, or effect. And it, it states the question of whether the plan conflicts with plans for avoiding environmental effect is a potentially significant impact. I, I don't fully understand that statement. Um, and if you could just, you, you, if you could clarify what that means exactly, that'd be helpful.
Certainly, um, Commissioner Reed. So we're discussing the land use section. If you'll bear with me just a moment, I have it up on my screen to make sure I'm looking at your um assessment, the language. But essentially, uh, when you're looking at land use policies and, and making sure that um in the city of Santa Barbara has multiple plans and policies, all of which overlap, but have some components that touch on um procedures that may be affected by the C W P P. So I bring back the biology example, um, where the C W P P measures may potentially um look, conflict with something that's in another policy or plan. So that's part of the analysis that would be carried forward in the E I R and we would look at that more closely. In any event, there was a potential conflict. Again, the purpose of the E I R is disclosure to the public, to the decision makers. And it may also highlight something that in the future, uh, the city council may elect to move forward and make revisions to other plans and policies and documents that the city has in place. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's helpful. Um, that's, that's all I have. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Escobedo, questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And uh, just thank you for this really extensive staff report and document. Um, it was really impressive, uh, and tons of really great information. Um, I feel pretty comfortable with where the scope of the program E I R is heading, um, with my fellow commissioners' comments. I did have a, a couple of questions and I'm, I'm kind of pig, piggybacking on Commissioner Higgins. When he was talking about uh renaming um the foothill and extreme foothill and we were changing to the very high fire hazard severity zone and then the coastal and it's the coastal inland or interior zone that's going to become the high fire hazard severity zone. Um, in, and I know that the A D U ordinance, and this might be for Mr. Busk, um, the A D U ordinance is coming to planning commission in August and then it'll be forwarded to uh, to the city council. But how would the, do we know or will we determine in the future how these new definitions will apply to that urgency ordinance that was passed by city council? Um, because it affected a homeowner's ability to build an A D U or a junior A D U um in only the extreme foothill and the foothill zone, but didn't discuss the coastal or the coastal interior zone. And so uh my question is, with this name change, is, is the same going to be true? Or um, yeah, I guess let's start there.
I think.
Yeah.
Sorry, Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Escobedo. So the um adoption of this C W P P will, is not anticipated until about March twenty twenty one. And we fully intend to have our own city adopted A D U ordinance prior to that and before the urgency ordinance expires. So it really shouldn't change anything that was in the interim urgency ordinance?
So I guess my question is, when we adopt the A D U ordinance, are we going to take into consideration the new terms that we are going to be using as of March twenty twenty one? Because the urgency ordinance, and I imagine that the new A D U ordinance might take this into consideration of the old terms, the extreme foothills and the foothill zone.
Um, yes, Commissioner, that's a great question. So we, um, you'll be seeing the draft ordinance soon for accessory dwelling units. But what we've done in that ordinance is to refer to um the names as they exist now and then refer to, or as may be amended or adopted with the C W P P by city council. So it sort of covers what exists now and what may exist in the future. We're trying to make it a little more, um, I would say almost generic in the ordinance so we don't um get tripped up with different names.
Fantastic. Yep, that's a perfect answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Escobedo. Commissioner Bond, there's some questions, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. Um, I just want to start by commending everyone who's involved in the project of this caliber. I am someone who strongly uh encourages and, and, and hopes and begs for this kind of uh detail and attention from the county fire, because I've personally gone through several evacuations and fire hits very close to home for me. Um, that being said, my only question today um is, is this. Uh, how are, how is your team um cooperating and collaborating with the county of Santa Barbara and um Montecito and anyone else that touches our boundaries of the city? Um, and how can, can you speak to us on what exactly is being done to make sure that that um, that collaboration is placed to help reduce the potential conflict that we've heard about? Um, and the possible, you know, um, uh, those, you, you mentioned uh the multiple plans and processes that overlap. Not only does that happen um within our own documentation. Not only does that happen within our own documentation, but also with the adjacency of the county. And so can you just speak to us a little bit on how that communication and that process is being dealt with so that we can help reduce those conflicts as we move forward with this documentation you're putting forth?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Bonderson, that's a great question. And we have really close associations with our, with our, everyone from the Forest Service to Montecito, to county fire, particularly in this project. And I'd like to bring Amber back, if she could, if she's still able to click her camera on, because she is our point person for contacting and cooperating with these agencies. So Amber, if we could expand on that a little bit, I think we have a great program going.
Yeah, one of the primary goals of the CWPP update is to work clarity collaboratively with our adjoining jurisdictions. That was something that was left out of our 2004 plan beyond identifying what was known then as the Community Tools Treatment Network. So we've done a lot of work with CAL FIRE, Santa Barbara County Fire, Mission Canyon, and Montecito, and have reached out to them when we were developing and identifying changes to our high fire hazard area and our vegetation management unit areas. This goes back to some of the previous Commissioners' questions with regards to the name change. One of the driving factors in the name change was to ensure that consistency between jurisdictions, because there are overlapping boundaries. And why were we calling it a foothill high fire hazard area when no other jurisdiction throughout the state recognizes that name? So that's part of that consistency and the collaboration working with the adjacent jurisdictions.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson. I'm happy to hear that. I was particularly curious when the previous Commissioners had brought that up and the answers that have been put forth, because I was hoping to hear, and what I think I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the county and the city and CAL FIRE, everyone who's involved with this project will likely be adopting the same language and universally crisscrossing so that the amendments that are made to one document will match and speak the same language as the others. Am I correct?
That's absolutely correct. In fact, from the county level with Rob Hazard, that's one of his goals as Fire Marshal with County Fire Department, is to ensure the collaboration across the entire front country of Santa Barbara when it comes to vegetation management and identification of our high fire hazard areas.
I am beyond thrilled to hear that. I'm really glad, because I think that it's going to really help, help everyone involved in our, in our community just to be able to work together and make sure that we're all working towards the same goals. I just want to extend a really heartfelt thank you to everyone for this project. I was very pleased to see it come forward to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonderson. I have a few questions before we come back to the Commission for deliberations. Again, we are to provide direction to staff on the scope of this programmatic environmental impact report. My first question, whoever would like to take this, is whether or not you have sought input from any other state agencies other than the Office of Planning and Research?
I'll take the first part of this. We have a large stakeholder group that includes multiple state agencies. I see Jessica just clicked on as well.
Joe, excuse me, Chair Fire Marshal Porey, is just going to go upon that and say you've had an open dialogue with the Coastal Commission, California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And as Joe, Fire Marshal Porey had mentioned, there is an extensive list of stakeholders that have been engaged through this process.
Okay, do we have a list of those other state agencies by chance available to put up on the screen? Or is, did I overlook maybe a list in our packet? And if not, I'll move on to my next question, if we don't have it.
I don't know if I have it handy to share. Maybe Amber has it up on her screen, if we can get Ms. Anderson back.
That's fine. That's fine. I'll move, I'll move right along. So to the sequo topic areas, if we could put that slide back up. I heard of various references as some of my colleagues were asking questions and perhaps subtly making requests, and I wanted to follow up there. I heard the term "population." Oh, well, here we have "population slash housing." That's been eliminated, and I want to ask you more about that. And then I also heard from a number of my colleagues "economic impact." And I know that these are growing in interest as sequo topic areas by some of the state legislators. I've been following that. Is this, if I, if I, during deliberations, if I request, along with my colleagues, that those be added to the topic areas? This says "population housing" really would be reinstated? Is, is that going to be acceptable to the Fire Department?
It would be acceptable to the Fire Department, but I'm no sequo expert. So if I could ask Ms. Kenahan to come back on for a second, just to find out, is that any?
So I guess what I'll, so a two-parter, "population slash housing," which we see was crossed out. Can we reinstate that? And then also "economic impact."
Chair Schwartz, "population and housing," absolutely. The economic impact, as we heard Commissioner Higgins note, actually several Commissioners have noted. We can definitely look at that issue and discuss with the Fire Department what the best mechanism is to provide, either through the CWPP potentially, and it may be outside the scope of the EIR per se, but it might be included as an analysis in the CWPP itself to help discuss the economic impacts of that or just disclose the impacts of that. But we can definitely look at that.
I think we would really start to get ahead of a wave of interest and possible new legislation if we roll up our sleeves and conduct this sort of analysis and incorporate it. And I'll talk more about that later. Then I wanted to ask you if we could put back up the map. I don't, I don't have a page for the, for our map of our city, which shows in various colors currently extreme foothill, foothill, and then we go to coastal interior and coastal with different colorings. Could we do that? Yes, and can we enlarge that, Mr. Bolton, possibly? So my question to the applicant team is whether or not you've discussed with other jurisdictions outside of Santa Barbara County how they are approaching a similar project to ours, given those jurisdictions that both have wildland, a wildland urban interface, as well as coastal, since these are quite diverse in terms of considerations of wildfire management and the wildland urban interface management?
Chair Schwartz, we have, in fact, we're in constant communication with them, with our neighboring jurisdictions over all of these maps and what we're doing in terms of changing the zones and adding and subtracting and all that. They have copies of it, and they have had very instructive and on-point comments for us as the time, as the CWPP went on and we were creating CWPP. So I, I'm not sure how they approach exactly the coastal zone aspect of it as opposed to the way we're doing it here. But we all have a little piece of the coast in our jurisdictions. So that, you know, they certainly do have high fire areas that do descend to the beach. So, you know, I think that, that we're looking at it in a similar fashion. We're just a little bit more densely populated than some of our neighbors.
And hopefully. I think we just lost Chair Schwartz. I might ask Vice Chair Wiscom to come on, or we can take a short recess and wait for her to come back. And Vice Chair, you're still muted.
Thank you, Ms. Kokinda, for the reminder. It's 3:31, let's, let's, oh, there she is. She's back. Let's keep going. Good. Chair Schwartz, can you, can you test your mic? Are you there?
I'm back.
Okay, great.
Thank you. I had a Cox communication problem also, like Commissioner Lodge. Okay, very good. Back to you, Mr. Porey, and my, my question. Do there specific communities you could mention for me? That you've been in discussion with that have similar, you know, topographies and, and fire planning considerations?
Yes, especially our neighbors, Montecito, Santa Barbara County, Carpinteria, Summerlin, and, and, you know, mostly county, within the county type agencies. But, you know, it's, we're in contact with other fire agencies throughout the state and various things. But since they're not adjacent to us, they're not, they're not so much impacted by our CWPP. So, you know, they're not necessarily stakeholders, other than the big agencies like CAL FIRE, we do regard as a stakeholder in the Forest Service.
All right, I'll save my follow-on for deliberations there. And then we received a letter from a local professional organization asking if we would consider an overlay in the areas that need to comply with high fire hazard landscape guidelines and defensible space requirements. Could you talk about your thoughts regarding an overlay to be considered?
I think that would be a fairly easy thing to accomplish. Perhaps Mr. Eckhart could answer that more fully than I could.
Okay, please, sorry about that. Mr. Eckhart?
Yeah, Chair Schwartz, we, I did receive the, a copy of the letter you referenced just now. In respect to an overlay versus a zoning change, I hate to keep passing it on, but I would probably want to defer to one of the planners of the city, possibly Rosie Deistie, to discuss how that would, would come into play. You know, the intent of our analysis was to just simply look at what the, the hazard modeling and the hazard assessment told us about the conditions in the city and how that translates to hazard and, and what the city and residents can do in those areas to mitigate fire risk.
I'm interested in the implications of using an overlay in, in our policymaking, in our mapping and policymaking, and how that might, well, hopefully positively or productively affect other policies we have, because we have to synchronize our policies really and look strategically about how they fit together or how they may contradict and impede one another. And that's one of my key areas of interest. I don't know if Ms. Deistie has a comment. Did you, I think you mentioned Ms. Deistie.
Hi, Chair, Chair Schwartz. So I'm not sure if an overlay would be any different from assigning this to a higher, high fire hazard severity zone. So I don't feel qualified to answer this without knowing more about the implications. You know, it's not a zoning change per our zoning ordinance. It's just a, it almost functions like an overlay. I don't know if Ms. Debusk wants to weigh in, but I don't see how this would be very different.
Well, I would think that a rezone is different than an overlay, but you're the, you're the, the planning expert, so maybe you could help me. Maybe there's a nuance there you could help me understand.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Chair Schwartz, in our zoning ordinance, we do have overlays. So I think that's where Rosie was going, is that a zoning overlay becomes a zoning issue, whereas currently these are mapped areas similar to our flood zones, where these are hazard areas and there may be different requirements, but they're not necessarily zoning-related. Although, as you are aware, with some rules such as accessory dwelling units, it does start getting into that area. But I don't know that there's much of a benefit to creating this as a zoning overlay versus how it's currently proposed and how it's been in the past.
Okay. And may I go, lastly, could we go back to the sequo topic areas? And my last question may be for our own staff, but I'll just ask it and whoever. So as I look at these, these all other areas to be analyzed in detail in the programmatic EIR, a question I have, which has come up before when we've worked on EIRs, is hierarchy of priorities of importance. So, of course, that means we have to identify a value system, prioritization of values. And we discussed this when Commissioner Lodge, might recall this, when she and I were working on the general plan back in 2010 and 2011. So I would like to know if, for next steps, if this list is going to be prioritized, and if you have any experience with that under sequo. This again, by the way, Fire Marshal Porey, is something I've heard that Sacramento legislators are interested in.
And if they are, we are. Chair Schwartz, I think that Jessica Kenahan probably can answer this a lot better than I can on the sequo issues.
Very good. Ms. Kenahan?
Chair Schwartz, thank you. So from the standpoint of values and priorities, as it's laid out in the initial study at this time, we do identify the objectives in the project description section of the document, which highlights, I think it's about 10 or 12 objectives, that sets forth priority prioritizing, for example, fire management policies, biological resource protection, maintaining a vibrant economy for the city. So from that standpoint, I think that, at least at a preliminary level, we are setting forth the values that the city is considering as part of the project. As far as taking that a step further and identifying a more rigorous prioritization structure, I think the, and I'm opining here, and I probably would want to bring maybe some of our planners from the city and council actually involved, but I would think you could potentially expand upon that and maybe the project description of the EIR to set forth priorities that the Fire Department feels is critical. With that said, I am not familiar, and I will certainly look into this as we move forward with the program EIR, of how other jurisdictions would have presented a prioritization of resource areas, unless it's aligned with the general plan, or again, coming back to the project description for the document. So I will say that I hear you and that I will take this in to consideration, and we will circle back with the Fire Department on this particular topic to see if there is a way we can incorporate that into the EIR.
Yes, if you could look into what I would call best practices from other communities that are starting to evolve their, their wildfire planning, the mapping, the planning, in a way that is, again, more strategic and nuanced, that goes beyond traditional, goes beyond how we have been planning and managing, especially our wildland urban interface mapping and, and management. So thank you. Those are my questions. And now I'd like to come back to the Commission for deliberations. And again, we're providing a direction to staff on the scoping. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Lodge, please? Did you need to do it? Commissioner Lodge?
Are we getting, y'all's getting?
Yes, we're getting.
Pardon my interruption. So Commissioner Lodge, I think we're getting some feedback from you. How are you connected? Are you using a phone and your computer to log in?
I have my phone connected, but I haven't.
That sounds better. Whatever you're doing, or whatever you just did, it sounds better.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going first because I don't have a great deal to say, because I think an excellent job has been done in the scoping on this project. The issues that have been brought up by my colleagues are not environmental ones, and as Ms. Kenahan has said, that they could be addressed in a, in a. And as Ms. Kenahan has said, they could be addressed in a, in a, in a different way aside from the EIR. But I think a good job has been done on the scoping for the EIR and I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiskom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I only put my, no one was, no one was showing up for the party. So I thought, well, okay, I'll go ahead. I don't have a lot to add. I think this has been a long time coming and I'm, I'm really excited about it. And, and I'm also excited about how far it's come along in a very short time. And I know that we don't have a lot of time on it. I would like to, I, I was very taken by the comments by Commissioner Higgins and Commissioner Escobedo on housing and population, and I would like to see that. I think that's important. And I would also like to see economic impacts because we, we, this will impact property owners and it will impact perhaps when we add zones and pack the fire department in vegetation management, et cetera. Commissioner Reed brought up the air quality issue. And I think that, and that's Section C with potentially significant impacts. But I, I agree with him that I think our, and I think where he was going with this is that our community, you know, given our, given the Thomas Fire and then our mud flows, our debris flows, we should, we should give a little bit more weight to that. And I think Ms. Kenahan said perhaps in Section Q wildfire, we could, we could talk about that more in terms of stormwater runoff. And then I wanted, if you would put back up the map that shows the existing and proposed areas, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Bolton? There was just up. No, no, that's, no, the one that, the one that shows the, the areas, both the existing. Yeah, that's the one. Okay, that's great. Yeah. So in here, so we're having an ADU, ADU agenda item coming up in August. And this, this is, if we're going to name these all the same, my suggestion is at this point that we, there, and they are divided, that we put A, B, C, D, E, F, G on them. And so Extreme Foothill A, and then south of it, Foothill B, and then to the west of it, Foothill C. And, and really just put codes on these that I think will, will really help facilitate a discussion, particularly if we include in this population and housing and then we get into an ADU discussion. So those are my comments. And Madam Chair, I don't know how you want to handle this. Are we just doing comments or, okay?
Providing directional comments to staff on scope.
Okay.
If everybody's.
Yeah, so that, that would be my suggestion. I think it will help facilitate the discussion on ADUs. And I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners on how they feel about that. But I do want to thank staff and DUDAC for, for this. I, it was just a, I, I'm just amazed at how far it's come. I remember the discussion. We had a planning commission and say, let's bring it forward. Let's get it done. So it's, it's really a great piece of work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Escobedo, comments on the scope of the EIR?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get to my comments, once again, thank you for just a really, really good staff report. And the, taking a look at the CWPP was really, really interesting. It was a good read. Lots of information. In terms of the scope, I too agree with my colleagues. I'd like to see housing and population incorporated into that scope. I know it wouldn't be a part of the program EIR, but I'd also like to see an economics analysis included in the CWPP. And to comment on Vice Chair Wiskom's suggestion of breaking up the different current zones that we have with the current terminology, breaking it up to kind of guide our discussions during the ADU discussions, I think would be really good. Because I think we can agree that there's a little bit of nuance into what we're going to incorporate into the ADU discussion. And then one thing that I think Commissioner Higgins brought up, but I'd like to also see is when the CWPP comes back, maybe more of a strict definition of what it means to be in the very high fire hazard severity zone versus just the high fire hazard severity zone? And what are some of the differences and what that could possibly mean? And ADUs was one of those topics, but it, I don't know if it's in the scope of the CWPP. But as Commissioner Higgins mentioned, it's also mentioned in the CWPP is insurance rates and what the, what that terminology may mean for homeowners' insurance. I'd like to see something in, like that in the CWPP. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed, comments on the scope of the PEIR?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Schwartz. So within the scope of analysis, I would also support the inclusion of population and housing. In terms of my comments on air quality, I believe that the analysis goes, probably goes beyond what is stated in the staff report and what I read in the initial study, which was the web attachment. But if the air quality analysis is nothing more than the project's potential emissions would, for the most part, come from what is listed in the staff report on page three, which seems very, very minimal, then, then I would not recommend. That would be a potentially significant impact and I would, I would just call into question its inclusion. Additionally, in, in the scope, if, if there was a way to include this in the scope of analysis, the economic impacts, then great. Just to note that the initial study also labeled environmental checklist that staff prepared, which is an incredible document. I mean, it gives a lot of detail to, if you have any questions outside of the staff report. On page three, there is a bullet point that states that the balance, fire mitigation strategies with the city's goals of maintaining a vibrant economy and protecting natural resources, historic resources and community character. Additionally, the, the CWPP on page one, in their introduction, states that further the CWPP process is intended to provide the community a forum for identifying values at risk from wildfire, which may include people, property, natural resources, cultural values, economic interests and infrastructure. So to most people's point, Chair Schwartz, most recently, I, I think that would be incredible to see an above and beyond effort, really, to be a leader in really prioritizing the review of economic impacts and economic interests. So I, I definitely support that. This is really impressive work and it's, it's an honor to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So got to have the housing component in there for sure. So I agree with everybody that's mentioned that to this point. I understand that we need to move it along. The longer this process takes, the more at risk we are. And so I'm, I'm loathe to bog it down with other things. And so, but I think we can, my request is that we do it concurrently. So keep the SEQUA document focused and I'd like to ask staff somehow if they can provide the additional disclosures or analysis that, that this commission has asked for, particularly those brought up by Mr. Hart. You know, housing costs are, are significant here. And if insurance premiums rise or go away, it's, it's something that we need to disclose for people. They need to go out and get their own insurance. That's going to be a separate significant cost on the private market, I understand. So I just, I, I really would like us to, I think we'd be missing it if we didn't provide more information that's related. I mean, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, you know, like anything in government, has further definition that is more narrow than you think. But the title of the program seems pretty broad. So I would, I would love it to include at least information about where people can go to engage the utility companies in this discussion of undergrounding is their, their lines. You know, I think it would be, we'd be missing out if we didn't at least include reference points on that. And certainly I would like to see some economics included in, in this document at some point as an appendix. And if staff could help us with that, then one of the various departments we have within, under community development or maybe public works, I think that would be appropriate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Bonderson?
Hello again. Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I have also felt that after reviewing this material and listening to all of my fellow commissioners, we've covered so many ideas and so many suggestions have been in agreement to one another. So I won't stand here and repeat everything. But I do want to say that the scoping of the EIR has been done very well, especially since it's been such a long time coming and we've all been anticipating this for, for so long. I'm, I'm personally very pleased to know how much of the adjacent jurisdictions are cooperating together in order to upgrade the language to match and to help reduce any conflict, especially because our goal is always to improve the communication and collaboration in problem solving in those moments of emergency when there's no time to, to sit down and, and discuss. So, you know, finding that everyone is working together and really doing their part to match across all of the jurisdictions, all the way up to Sacramento and, and so on, is, is wonderful to hear. I'm, I'm, I'm very relieved and, and happy to know that that's taking place, that everyone is, is working together here. I do agree with my fellow commissioners when they ask for, to see the housing component and further economic analysis, for all the reasons they said, so I don't need to repeat it. And I do want to strongly support the, the, the labeling efforts that Vice Chair Wiskom put forth. I really like the idea of really separating and labeling each of those communities, those neighborhoods. So that when that, when the next time we have the opportunity to discuss this, we have that, we can use that to facilitate very specific discussions in detail about each of those unique neighborhoods in order to develop discussions, guide discussions, whether it's about housing and traffic or, you know, the list goes into detail. But I really do appreciate her suggestion. I hope that that's something that we can also request to be placed into this when we see it again. So thank you again to everyone involved. I'm really pleased to be a part of this today. Very excited.
Just some concludes, concluding remarks from me. And before I ask that the timeline be put back up on the screen, I want to come back very quickly to the sequatopic areas. I'm not sure I'm clear from an answer to my question, so I apologize if this is duplicative. But I do want to understand if, already covered in our hundreds of pages in our packet today, if there is a, a value hierarchy or a prioritization hierarchy with respect to analysis as a part of SEQUA, as we look ahead to October, which is when this is coming back to the planning commission for the draft programmatic EIR hearing. Is there anyone from the team who could just, perhaps either very quickly tell me where I may have missed that in our package or if you're, if you'd be willing to take that back? And I'm not sure what additional communication we could have between now and October, but would like to get your thoughts on that. Ms. Kenahan?
Chair Schwartz, as far as the evaluation is presented now in our document, we don't prioritize any of the resource areas over another resource area. To your comment earlier about looking at best practices, again, we can definitely revisit that with the fire department to see if there is a way to set forth in our analysis areas that might need to be looked at more closely. And that may also be something that needs to carry over into the CWPP document itself to help set forth additional priorities. I think it was Commissioner Reed who had noted and commented specifically in certain sections about values at risk. We may be able to build upon that analysis in the CWPP and discuss in greater detail those areas that the city feels require additional priority over what's identified now.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And I did want to ask all of the commissioners to please turn on your webcams. One of the, the new practices we are trying out is during deliberations for all of us to be on the screen since GoToWebinar now affords us that. And we both want to see each other and have the public view us as well. And I mentioned what I did just a moment ago. Really, it was a follow on question. But behind that question is what I think is a growing trend, and I'm pleased about this trend from my reading. And that's a more interdisciplinary, I'll call it an interdisciplinary approach to wildland or, or wildland urban interface mapping and planning that does in fact take into strategic consideration, that is values hierarchy consideration, these categories that we see on the screen before us. And so I'm looking forward to staff reaching out to other jurisdictions to look into best practices. I want to go to the map one more time, Mr. Bolton, if you could put that up on the screen. And I just want to express that I, I really have some concern about bringing together those, those geographic areas, micro areas of our community that abut the forest and abut the extreme foothill that are very different from down in what's currently referred to as coastal interior and coastal. And I understand that you're looking to align in terminology and, and other considerations, practices within the county of Santa Barbara itself. And you mentioned those, those jurisdictions within the county. But I think there are other implications that concern me in grouping all of these areas together. And that's why I think we need to be strategic. We need to look at population and housing and economic impact. And, and then make a decision regardless of what Montecito may do or the unincorporated county may do, because I'm not sure that it's a one size fits all, even though, again, I can definitely appreciate the interest and conceptually the interest in aligning with our other jurisdictions within the county. However, it may not fit for Santa Barbara. And so I'm just going to leave that open. And then to say that, part of my interest in taking a very close look at this mapping is that I had a brief discussion with the State Housing and Community Development Department about wildfire mapping and some trends in certain jurisdictions that seem to be overreach. And the concern by state HCD, which is now a concern of the state attorney general's office, is that some jurisdictions are overreaching, they're overmapping parts of communities that have never been hazards, where there, there's a record of there not having been wildfire hazards and everything that goes along with that. And so there's this. And so there's this looming question of a balance, a reasonable balance of mapping for public protection, that is safety, and the balance with all of our other needs as a vibrant community. And that does include the population and housing and economic impact. So I think it's important for our city to know that HCD, that is the State Housing and Community Development Department, is watching very closely jurisdictional remapping of fire hazard areas that have that restrict that further restrict housing development, including accessory dwelling units. So in a way, be forewarned for our community that we're all being monitored in this regard. So I think we need to be mindful and and thoughtful and find that balance, which I think we're going to do in the next several months on various policies that come to us. So with that, I am very pleased, as as our fire said, that we encourage this to come forward. It's it's a terrific next step, and I personally am looking forward to the October hearing and the draft PEIR. And with that, I think we're concluded, because we're just providing comments back on the scope to staff. So I don't see any other webcams on from staff, for example. And with that, this item will be adjourned. And at this point, Mr. Poirot, thank you, and the entire team very much.
And Chair Schwartz, just one final comment. Thank you all for your insightful comments. We do take all of them seriously. We look at everything that's that's recorded here today, and and we'll take everything into consideration.
Thank you. So we're going to conclude this item now, and we have one more.